Y'all pray with me. Probably come here tonight with your help. Father, we know there's so many people who've been damaged by hurricanes and tornadoes. Bless these people, Lord. Help them get their lives back together. Also, Father, we pray for the sick, pray for the homeless, pray for those who can't help themselves, and we pray for the poor. Father, they need our prayers. We ask that you look down on them favorably. For it's Jesus' name we pray, for his sake. Come on. You're about to enter a level of service in which you will be serving to 31,000-plus people. After the appeal, it is my duty to offer yourself as a living sacrifice to God.
I, Elmo Vance, do solemnly and sincerely affirm that I will support the Constitution and law for the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, and I'm consistent with the Constitution of the United States, and I'm consistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of my ability and knowledge, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as councilman. So help me God. And to my son-in-law and daughter and grandson, granddaughter, y'all please stand up. And to my family, First Missionary Baptist Church of Clayton family, y'all please stand up. And I see some of Springfield here. Well, Springfield, my home church, please stand up as well. To the Parks and Recreation Committee, which I'm currently serving as a board member, And also, I see members of the Garner Revitalization Association, the Garner Concerned Citizens United. Will you please stand as well? I want to say, and anybody else who's here to support me that I miss. Thank you all so much. God bless you all. Thank you.
I'm gonna allow Council to say a few words. Bill, please.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Vance, on your selection for this position. We look forward to working with you, and I know from past experience and knowing you in other committees that you bring your own special abilities and talents to this job. I should say, I guess somewhat lightly, that by your induction tonight, I am, I think, no longer officially the rookie of this group any longer. I was the shortest-tenured person on this council.
After 12 years.
Yeah, after 12 years, yeah. Welcome, rookie, I guess I could say. No, thank you for your willingness to serve, and we look forward, as a council, to serving with you. I certainly do anything I can do to facilitate the process. Just let me know. Thank you.
Kathy.
Yes, sir. When Elmo was chosen, I emailed him, and I said, "You do realize now that you're stuck with sitting beside me three times a month for the next however many months?" And he said that wasn't a bad thing. I am happy to have you onboard, Elmo, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Ray.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think when Mr. Vance came up here behind me tonight, he appeared to be a little nervous what he was getting into, and I said, "Look, anybody who can preach and minister to a flock," I said, "This ought to be a piece of cake compared to that. If you can preach the Word of God each and every week to your membership, this ought to be easy." But when I was, I've jokingly referred to Mr. Vance a couple times as a Swiss Army knife because he does a little bit of everything. You know? He's been on parks and rec, planning commission, Board of Adjustment, now he's in the town council. He's served on numerous committees throughout town. He's worked with the concerned citizens. He's a pastor, and he's a DOT engineer. That's a Swiss Army knife, and does a little bit of everything.
GEDC.
And GEDC, that's correct. But I look forward to serving with you, Mr. Vance, and I know you do well.
Counselor.
Let me add my congratulations to as well, Elmo. There's absolutely no doubt that we all felt to a person that we would thoroughly enjoy working with you. We've gotten along for a good while ourselves, and we don't have any other prospects except to think that we'll continue to work well together. A lot of times, people will say, "Well, you got some large shoes to fill with Mr. John's passing." I would say that I don't think you would be so presumptive as to try to fill his shoes, but you do succeed him, and you would be expected to make your own footprints in Garner, and that you are well-equipped and qualified to do, and so welcome aboard.
You're not gonna walk five miles a day. Are you gonna walk five miles a day?
We don't require that.
No, I will not walk five miles a day.
Okay. Petitions and comments.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one thing? For those, if you so desire, you don't have to stay the whole time. It's good to see you. I just wanted to make that point clear to everybody. It's good to see you, okay?
Petitions and comments. That is time on the agenda for anyone to address the council. On anything that's not on tonight's agenda, if you wish to address the council, please come through and state your name and address. How you doing, sir?
Yes, sir. My name's Chris McGinnis, and I'm here concerning 4408 Jessup Drive. And I just thought I would come and make a few quick comments. I noticed the time was three minutes, so I cut things down to some degree. As you remember, as I mentioned, I'm Chris McGinnis of 4408 Jessup Drive. I'm here today to relay to you the ongoing problems in the dispute and to bring my concerns to you in hopes that we can make a reasonable and equitable compromise in this situation. I'm skipping the history because I know that you probably know that from previous things which have occurred, but ultimately, in the Adjustment Board, I was convicted by the members of the Board of Adjustment for something I had not initially been charged with, changing the appearance of a structure. I strongly believe, as do my attorneys, that I was never charged with this by Anderson because in no way have I changed the appearance of the structure of my home at 4408 Jessup Drive. This charge is very difficult, if not impossible, for you to prosecute me on. My attorneys are very confident we will win in Superior Court. In essence, you basically don't have a case. This case has always been exclusively about my trailers in the yard at 4408 Jessup Drive. From the beginning of these charges levied against me, this has been an extremely clear case of selective enforcement. Before the Board of Adjustment hearing, I sat down with my attorneys and Anderson in what was supposed to be negotiations, hopefully to resolve and handle this case on October 4th, 2018. At this meeting, I supplied Mr. Anderson with pictures of vehicles, trailers, boats, and other earth-moving equipment, all in the yards or on the street of the Greenbrier neighborhood. These included 4905 Winterlocken Road, where at any given time there are trailers and between one and eight different earth-moving vehicles in their yard. The corner of Jessup at Vestad Drive. Since I moved in, there's been a car, a truck there with a for-sale sign. I don't think it's ever gonna sell, and I don't think it really is for sale, but it's two houses up from me. 3809 Vestad Drive. They don't mow, they don't pick up their leaves, they don't do anything. It's a wild wonderland. And my favorite, 405 Winterlocken, three houses up from me, he didn't move it. Not only did he have a boat on the street, he had a boat on the street with no trailer. It just sits on the street. And quite frankly, I don't care. They're my neighbors. They live in a non-binding HOA, and it's not my business and none of their business of what I have on my property. Mr. Anderson's response was to laugh and agree wholeheartedly that these were all serious violations, and proceeded to inform me that I could file complaints on each and every one of them, and he would prosecute them. I personally believe this is a bluff on Mr. Anderson's part. My response was I didn't care what my neighbors did. I just wanted to be treated like everybody else. It is important, again, to note, I just showed pictures of violations in my own neighborhood of Greenbrier. Again, the covenants of Greenbrier have expired for close to two decades and are non-binding. If I go throughout the town of Garner, there are dozens and dozens and dozens of more blatant violations that are more egregious than my supposed violation. Members of the town council, there is no doubt that I am a victim of selective enforcement. Finally, and most egregiously, from the beginning of the conflict of the non-binding Greenbrier HOA, Mr. Anderson has brought my sexual orientation, the fact that I'm a proud gay man, into the conversation, in my opinion, to intimidate and silence me. To be clear, this issue was brought into this discussion by the HOA and by Mr. Anderson, not by me. When the initial complaints were levied by the non-binding Greenbrier HOA, they had gone on my Facebook page and printed off many pages and presented a packet to the members of the town council and town attorney. To reiterate, I felt I had nothing to hide. I had been very transparent for my motivations in purchasing this home and had been very open in my sexual orientation for decades. Therefore, there was no privacy settings on my Facebook page. My life is an open book. Imagine the horror when I realized that this packet, that I realized in this packet that every gay reference or discussion of gay issues on my Facebook page had been printed up and presented to the town council. Ms. Jenkins, who I've since spoken to in the meeting, called me stupid for being open on my general Facebook page. A number of the members of the HOA stated that I had been in trouble before. That simply is not true. Or was this code for "he's different than us"? "He's a gay activist and a troublemaker in the community"? Check the packet out. I asked you, why were these things even printed up or presented? These pages were a part of initial lawsuit filed by Mr. Anderson against me. My attorney, Matthew Saradini, brought this up in a conversation with Mr. Anderson on September 2018, remarking at how inappropriate they were. I feel very certain that printing these pages on Facebook and having them in the public record were veiled threats to out me as a strategy to help repress the lawsuit. I was living then and am now. At the October 4th meeting with Mr. Anderson, I made my disdain abundantly clear. I stated, "Mr. Anderson, I was the master of ceremonies and fundraiser for the North Carolina Gay and Lesbian Pride Parade for three years. I helped run the first openly gay candidate for office in a statewide race in North Carolina, Superior Court Judge Ray Warren. I was the sole interviewer for the Gay and Lesbian Historical Archive, part of the Southern Historical Program housed at Wilson Library at UNC Chapel Hill. Mr. Anderson and members of the town council, people in North Carolina know that I'm gay." Mr. Anderson's response was that he was sorry for my gayness. Mr. Anderson's response to my concerns was to go and use a Sharpie, remove every mention of gay from the packet, and send it back to me. The damage had already been done. At the October 25th Board of Adjustment meeting, Mr. Anderson presented an evidence of the nondiscrimination statement for the town of Garner. When the presiding officer of the Board inquired, "How was this relevant to the case?", Mr. Anderson said, "Well, I don't know how to say this, but Mr. McGinnis, he's a gay." Members of the Garner Town Council, have we learned nothing from North Carolina's very recent past on these issues? Have we not, have we learned nothing from Amendment 1 to the North Carolina Constitution banning gay marriage? And North Carolina making us a laughingstock before, when we were before well-respected? Have we learned nothing from House Bill 2, this so-called bathroom bill passed by the North Carolina General Assembly, which cost our state millions of dollars in tourism and industrial investment dollars? I don't know. Maybe some of you support these actions in our very recent past, but I will tell you that many companies care about discrimination of any kind, including discrimination against LGBTQ people, including Amazon. Members of the town council, all of this conflict began because some members of the Greenbrier community were upset about trailers being parked in the corner lot. The trailers were in compliance, so they searched for more information and decided to weekly hobble together a complaint of a commercial enterprise. You have a shaky case, but will not succeed, and in the process will hurt the reputation of your town. I have the solution, though. In August 2018, I purchased the adjoining lot to my property, 4408 Jessup Drive, zero Winterlocken Road. This has been a known option with Mr. Anderson since October 4th, 2018, when it was offered as a solution. I have already moved two of my larger trailers to this parcel of land. I intended to move them all, but without a parking pad, coupled with the very wet two years we have had, my truck and trailer sunk every time I attempted to move them. Two members of the Greenbrier HOA, Ms. Jenkins and her husband, have already thanked me for this good faith effort and eventual solution, and I think ultimately everyone involved will be very happy with these results. Having said this, I will not sign off on any agreement where I unjustly sign away my rights to myself that everyone else has with the UDO, aka the Unified Development Ordinance. I will not remove my trailers from my land during the construction and the permitting process. This was previously agreed to by Anderson, documented with my attorney, Randy Herman. I will not sign my rights away to load and unload vehicles on my property. Everyone has the right to load and unload vehicles on their property. I will not sign away my rights to have wrought iron furniture on my porches, which are behind my fence or in my backyard, behind a fence. I unfortunately cannot cement a parking pad in my adjoining lot, but I'll happily do a pad and crush-and-run, a material which was prolific and common in the Greenbrier neighborhood. I expect the town of Garner to waive all permitting fees and prioritize the expenditure and expedite the permitting process. My intention is to move this as quickly as possible myself. I want this done, maybe even quicker than everyone else involved. The solution has been offered since October 4th, 2018. This could have all been handled then if only reasonable conversations had occurred. For this reason, I expect the town of Garner to cover my legal costs. I'm well aware of Anderson's stalling tactics and strategy. Twice in October 4th, 2018, at our negotiations in front of my lawyers, and then again on October 25th, 2018, at the Board of Adjustment hearing, Mr. Anderson insinuated he would bankrupt me and make my case last for years. I am also aware of how happy some members of the town council are because Mr. Anderson always settles out of court, and members of the town council of Garner are very happy about this, and I hope we can. Bullies don't scare me. Bullies call me to action. Pastor Nancy Petty of Puller Memorial Baptist was supposed to be here. Unfortunately, a member of her congregation is dying, as well as Equality PAC NC, they're actually right now lobbying the General Assembly, but they planned on being here as well. I'm having ongoing discussions with the ACLU, the Lambda Legal Defense Fund. I will go the distance on this case should I need to. Do not doubt my words, but also, please do not doubt my sincerity of wanting a kind and equitable conclusion to this event. We are all aware of the growing pains the entire Triangle has had over the past several years, including Garner, experiencing the explosive increase in population over the past decade. The explosive growth is forcing all of us to make lifestyle changes that we aren't comfortable with. The growth has affected African-Americans who are being gentrified out of downtown and South Raleigh. They are fearful about finding affordable housing. Worker-class whites in South Raleigh and Garner are fearful of the changes which are occurring, impacting the lifestyle they have known in some cases for generations, and even a gay man who once was very happy in downtown and West Raleigh, and always loved by his neighbors, made the very stressful step to leave what he knew and loved and move down the street to Garner so he could survive economically and comfortably and stay in the Triangle he loved so much. Change is very scary for all of us, but I think if we all are rational and keep a reasonable, honest dialogue, we can find more perfect solutions. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to ask the council? Josh, no, did you? Okay.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name's Michelle Collins. Originally a native of Garner and grew up on the Smith Drive area. Thanks to Ms. Helen Phillips, we're coming up today to present, to ask, if we've had, this is our third year of a community reunion that we have at the Ram mill Street Park, right down at Smith Drive and Ran Road where it meets. We're looking this year to dedicate the park to Mr. Jackie John. It's kind of ironic that Mr. Elmo got his oath today, and I come up here to speak about this, but we're presenting to the council to see how you all feel about it, or if you actually support us in reference to renaming or dedicating the park to Jackie John's.
I don't mind saying that certainly I think this is something that the council would consider. As one council member, I certainly would consider that. I think, I don't know if we would ordinarily refer this to one of our...
You're going to end the meeting. End the meeting. Take it up. Y'all stay for the meeting. Yes, sir. We'll take it up. We'll get through the regular agenda. Take it up.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me.
Y'all stay. Anyone else? Josh, no, you're here now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add two items. The first is a budget amendment referring to repairs that were made at Garner Fire Station 1 to the roof, where we have a cost share with Wade County, and we have an invoice from the fire department for our share. So get that approved. And then also, the presentations, just to make an announcement about a recent purchase town dismay.
With those changes or amendments, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, please, say it, folks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To your understanding.
No, I think that the way to be handled is probably through council reports.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you want me to go ahead with the presentation? Just wanted to announce to the public that today the town of Garner acquired a 72-acre property on Garner Road near, not far from Jones Sausage Road, to be used, potentially to be used as a future park. It's former Jürgen property, and we have an overhead here, and it's gonna show the outline of the property, and you can see that a majority of it is wooded. It's beautiful land. We've walked it, and very scenic. And then also, on the property are two homes. One's more grand than the other, but they both, you know, have some history in Garner and the Garner community, and this is some photographed renderings of one of the homes. And we just look forward to having that in the town of Garner as one of our properties for us to develop in some way in the future. Typically, when we have a property like this, we will have a study done to figure out what is the best mix of uses as far as parching rec and whether it'll be active or passive or some type of mix. So we'll look at that, and then there'll also be discussions about the properties, the actual structures on the property, and what might happen with that. They're off limits right now, so we don't want anybody to get too excited and try to go out there because we do not want any trespassing on there, but just know that those are town properties, and we're real happy to have those as part of our future offerings for the town of Garner and to our residents. Just to give you a little more information, we did close on it today, and it was $2.4 million, but it was below, excuse me, below actual market value, so we felt like it was a win-win situation for us, the town, and the property owner. So with that, see if there's any questions.
Questions, comments?
I'd be happy to suggest that I think the council did a good day's work when we had the offer from Mr. Jürgen, and we decided to pursue this. I think, my fellow council members, I think this, I think Mr. Singleton gets credit for a statement I saw today, that this probably will become one of the crown jewels of our park system, as others are, and I think that's well-stated. It's in a strategic location, and we can make very good use of it, I think. Thank you.
I'll make a couple comments. I wanted this to be a town of Garner property for years. I mentioned it was Jürgen several years ago. I said, "If you ever, when your home place ever, if it ever comes to sale, please let the town of Garner get an opportunity to discuss purchasing." He said, "Thank you." Beautiful property. He said, "What for?" I said, "I think it'll be an incredible park, as big as it is, and the house, which is in really good condition with this old slate roof. It's in really good condition, and hopefully we will be able to find a partner to work on the house and some of the structures. Be a great type of venue for different events." This park is, we've had the opportunity to walk it or ride it on a golf cart, or a combination of both, some into snow. That's when it was in December, I reckon. And it's a beautiful piece of land, and I think what we'll see here is a combination of active and passive space. There's some geographic, what is, the land falls off in the back. It's a beautiful ravine in the back. Matter of fact, there's something I didn't know, really, it was, how much of a drop-off in Garner is when you go back there, but it's a beautiful piece of property, and I think it can, will be developed in such a way that, we have beautiful parks already. I think two of our crown jewels are Lake Benson Park and White Deer Park. It's hard to believe White Deer Park is 10 years old this year. It opened in the fall of 2009, so it's 10 years old. And this is another opportunity on the other side of Garner, to a bustling area. It's nice to have some park space that'll be passive, that'll, should be developed in a way, I believe it'll be developed in a way that residents of all ages have the opportunity to enjoy. So, it's a win-win. As Rodney mentioned, Mr. Jürgen gave us a really good opportunity to purchase this at a good price, and I think in a few years, very proud to see how this park is planned for and developed.
I'd like to extend my thanks to, on behalf of the council, to Mr. Jürgen, that there were, been many opportunities, or several opportunities, over the recent years for him to dispose of the property. The house is located there, thereon. One dates back to the 1800s. That's the smaller home. The one that you have on the screen, it was built sometime between... The one that you have on the screen, it was built sometime between 1905 and 1911. There was, in one of the closets, there was evidence of a ladder that could take you into the attic space. Took advantage of the opportunity to look in it. And if you looked at the structural materials, it looked like they'd been installed maybe a week or 10 days ago. They were just as, just as in good a shape today as they were 100 years ago, primarily because of the slate roof that's on there that really protected the structure. Mr. Jürgen, that was the home place for a number of members of his family. But he lived there for a short while during the war, World War II, when some of his family was in service overseas. But in any event, he had some rather strong attachment. And I'm sure parting with a family-owned property like that was, just as we've had recent discussions about disruption to family property. But he is, he was, where he mentioned, he made it, made us an offer that was the one that he was satisfied with and one that we were. And I appreciate him holding on to it until we gathered our thoughts together and saw that it was a property that ought to be purchased. So I think it's a win-win for both of us. And we are always be indebted to Sherman for him being able to help us achieve some long-term benefit for the town.
Move to approve.
Thank you. I wish you may to say all in favor, but I say aye.
Aye.
All vote. Come here and you're in the new and old business.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that's coming back to you for possible final action tonight. UDO 1901 regarding the possibility of adding bars, nightclubs and taverns as a special use to the central business district. Bring up the language on the screen so you have it. There have not been any changes since you saw it at the public hearing a couple of months ago. The planning commission did hear it last night and provided a unanimous recommendation to, recommendation to you to approve. Mr. Whitaker is in the audience again, the applicant. If you have any additional questions, thoughts, concerns, we'll be glad to answer them. But again, just in summary, this will be restricted to only those parcels fronting on Main between Montague and Griffin, so it will include the pad potentially next to the rec center. And it would also require that any bar tavern use have at least 250 square feet devoted to kitchen to ensure that there's a balance of both food and alcohol. And then the cap on the hours at 1:00 AM. But again, we're here to take any comments, see if you have any additional questions. And then there's an ordinance attached for possible adoption.
This is not a public here, item that needs to be addressed. Nothing for Jeff, right?
Ready for motion?
There's an ordinance to look on.
I move that the town council approve UDO 1901 and adopt ordinance 2019-3963, that being a text amendment sponsored by the Downtown Garner Association to amend the table, the use table in specific standards to allow the bar nightclub and tavern uses in the central business district, subject to the additional standards and securing of the appropriate permits.
Second. All in favor, but I say aye.
Aye.
with the public boardroom presentations. I apologize.
Not a problem, we can act on it.
We can, if you'd like, or if you want to go to the next one, I can find out what's going on and bring it.
Come back to it.
Come back to it.
When you said go back to it? Yeah, we could go to item number three and we have staff here for that.
Good evening.
Evening.
Let's hope we're not of the same faith as Mr. ... Here we are. Good evening. My name is Forrest Jones, I serve as our public works director. We're here to talk to you this evening about a potential reclassification bringing to you in our services division within our facilities group. I won't insult you by reading the memo, but in short, earlier this year, we had one of our senior building maintenance technicians resign. They took employment somewhere else. So as we do, and each time someone leaves our organization, we always go back and take a look. We consult our five-year staffing plan that we update annually as part of our budget process. And then look and just ask is backfilling this position the best thing we need to do and how does it align with that overall plan? And then, so in this case, we already had a position in our upcoming plan for a facilities manager position. This position would really be someone that spent more of their time focusing on contract management, ongoing services such as janitorial contract, other things of that nature, projects that are funded as part of our budget process as well. So just a number of things we're doing. And then obviously, special projects come along, things like depot relocation. The facilities group would be a group that would likely be the department to handle So after we decided that was good, we thought that was something to move forward with. We consulted again with HR. We talked to the budget team to make certain we were not going to cause any undue stress on the budget as well, our current budget and budgets moving forward. And then obviously consulted with town administration. And we feel like this makes some good sense for us to move in this direction. And certainly while we have a position that is vacant, that is always a good time for us to consider making changes. I would say that these changes this year come to a cost of around $8,500 from above what we had previously in the bank. And obviously, we could pay for that. We would propose to pay for that this evening through the salary dollars by the vacated position. We've also consulted the budget team in looking into next year's budget, and they have recommended this is not, will not impose a problem representing the recommended budget next year. So I'll be happy to take any questions. Just a couple of fun facts before we take questions. In 2012, we had around 100, we had approximately 125,000 square foot of building space that is maintained by our facilities division. Coming this summer, we proposed to have around 198,000 square foot of building space. So we often think of our new buildings as being something that, you know, it's new, it doesn't take maintenance, it doesn't have any requirements. That's not necessarily the case. We're doing maintenance in different ways. So when I think, when you look at that, that's an increase of around 73,000 square foot, which represents about 58% growth in our facilities division. So we're certainly seeing a lot of, we've seen a lot of growth in our, in our facilities. And we're seeing with the new buildings and just new systems, we're doing business a little differently. Things run, you know, how building systems run and operate. We're finding ourselves much more involved in some contract management with things that we've not been in the habit of doing before. So we feel this position would serve us very well as we move forward. Again, we think it'll position us well for the growth we've got coming ahead as well as the overall department. So I'll be...
We got classification and salary adjustment?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I would, I would just say, the last sentence of the memo that you submitted makes a lot of sense to me. It said, the contrast now will be the proposed change will allow us to move forward toward a proactive facilities maintenance program. And I think that's always a positive rather than always having to be reactive. So certainly will vote to approve your request.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
First, will we, so we had a technician to resign and we're going to reclassify that position?
We're going to, what, essentially what we're doing, we, currently in facilities as we structure today, we have three technicians, we have one senior technician, and that's the vacancy. And then we have a supervisor. The current supervisor spends a lot of their time devoted to handling the contracts, handling those types of things. So they're, in a sense, neglecting the field staff. I mean, they're torn in which do I do today? Do I work on contract maintenance projects or am I out meeting with our folks in our buildings, looking at what's going on, helping the technicians do the work? They really just don't have time to do both, so they have to choose which one we're going to do today. So in this new organization, we would still have a supervisor that would be function, that would be more of a working supervisor and take on a role of completing work orders, spending time with technicians, having, being in the buildings themselves physically more, having a better sense of what's going on. And that's, that's one of our, that would be one change. And then the facilities manager would be more, much more of an administrative-type position, doing the things that's outlined here, talking about contract management, new funded projects, ongoing things such as an HVAC system goes down right now. You know, you're going out getting bids, walking through that process. All that takes time and energy. And that's where we'd like for this person to spend their time as well as the councilman Marshburn's comment, moving us to begin to develop maintenance programs. Right now, we are primarily a reactive maintenance department in that area, meaning you called us, if something broke, we come right out and we'll try to get it fixed and get it repaired and up and going as quick as we can. But really, we don't have anyone that has time or capacity to devote to developing these maintenance programs in our facilities.
So if we had a supervisor and three technicians and a technician resigned, when all, when the...
We had four. You've got, you've got three technicians, one senior, and the senior position resigned.
Okay, so that was four technicians?
Yes.
Okay. And then somebody that's supervisor. But of those four, we're just reclassifying one position. When we finish up, are we going to still have four people?
Yes.
And in the new budget, we're going to have four people or will we be backfilling that position in the new budget?
We will not be backfilling that position in the new budget. If we reclassify this position, the senior building maintenance technician goes away. And is basically converted to a facilities manager. So you have a facilities manager who's doing the contract maintenance, you'll have a supervisor who is more of a working supervisor, and then you'll have three technicians. So you've still kind of got four folks out on the ground completing work. Just one of the, one of them will be a supervisor kind of making, ensuring the maintenance is happening.
Thank you.
Other questions?
You need to mention...
Mayor, I'll move that we approve the recommendation from public works director Forrest Jones to reclassify the position to a, let me see, facilities manager, I believe was the term.
Yes, sir.
Second.
All in favor, but I say aye. I'm here to present to you the 2019 annual resurfacing contract. Quick agenda, just to provide a quick summary of our bid opening. Talk a little bit about ADA upgrades and then our staff recommendation and next steps in the project schedule moving ahead. So we had our bid opening on April 4th. We had a total of four bids. The low bidder was Gelder and Associates. The initial engineer's estimate was 500, just north of 510,000, and Gelder's bid was just under 490,000, which was about 4% under the engineer's estimate. One of the things that municipalities are looking to do, as we are mandated by federal guidelines, is to, when you're going and doing a public right-of-way upgrade, such as paving or utility construction or building facades, that you try to upgrade those public facilities to meet the latest and greatest ADA guidelines. And they, if you use the word, hear the word PROWAG, it stands for the public utility, public rights-of-way and access guidelines. One of the things that we're doing on a couple of these roads is we have a lot of outdated handicap ramps and curb ramps that are either diagonally aimed toward the corner of an intersection and for either the visually impaired or for wheelchair accessibility is harder to make it through those intersections. So once we got the bids in, we worked with Gelder to see what kind of additional work it would cost to upgrade those. And some of that is included in your packet. We've got about 24 total ramps, and I think 22 of those 24 are all on Garner Station Boulevard. And then the other two are on Forest Drive, which is the bulk, that's, that's all the ramps we have on these streets. So if we are to add that to the bid, we negotiated with Gelder and they gave us the cost of $68,200. We were projecting to put in a 3% contingency just in the cases of any quantity overruns or additional patching. I know Garner Station Boulevard is in worse repair than most of the other streets. And we've got some quantities in there, but sometimes in construction, you just end up with a little bit more. So rather than bring that to you later, we want to go ahead and talk about that now, add that in in case we need it. If all those are approved, then that would bring the total to $574,122. Just mention, I think the, in the packet, the original motion was 525, and I just saw that. So just want to make clear that's 574,122. So the next steps will be to execute the contract. The contractor would then issue property notices to all the property owners on all the streets. And with about a month leeway to get the contracts executed, we look at a notice receipt of around mid-May. It's a 90-day contract time, which would mean the last, last street would be completed by mid-August. Happy to answer any questions.
I think in the memo, you talked about that we were originally allotted for 825,000 and that...
Yes, sir.
So you'll come back at a later date for the remainder?
Yeah, that will be handled through Public Works Department, we'll be putting out the preservation contract with the remainder of that money. And that's mostly, I believe, micro-surfacing and some crack ceiling.
Well, on that particular part, the 825 is what was allotted in the current budget year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the 250 can be spent in the current budget year, we can tie it into the next budget year with the 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars, the street preservation, street preservation contract. This, we're doing the 250 as a separate contract, right?
It is a separate contract.
Separate contract. And then next year's will be done separately. Okay, just want to make sure.
But are we going to be able to, Mr. Jones, fulfill that 250 contract before July 1st or will it likely be after?
We anticipate having the contract maybe executed by end of June. Whether all the work will be completed by then, I seriously doubt. We've just run into some capacity issues with some staffing situations, so...
Money will be obligated out of this year's budget.
Yes, money will be obligated out of this year's budget, yes.
Mayor, are you ready for a motion? I move that we accept the staff recommendation to award the 2019 resurfacing project to Gelder and Associates and authorize the town manager to execute a contract with Gelder and Associates to exceed 574,000. to exceed $574,000.
Second.
Hold up a favor, but I say hi. Hey, before we go to the committee report, I want to get the question to Collins' family request.
We got one more item that, what did you have that you were going to? What did happen? What was it?
Oh, oh, yeah, one, it's already happened. One was under consent. The budget amendment was under consent, which got a-
The roof replacement?
The roof replacement. So that got approved already. And then the other was presentation. So I'm, I'm good for now.
Do you want to come to the podium and make that request again?
Yes, sir.
Name and address.
My name is Rodney Hinton. I'm a longtime resident, a resident of Garner. And I knew Mr. Jackie John most of all my life, his family, his wife, his sons. And I'm a member of Springfield Baptist Church all my life since I was a little boy, over 40-something years.
Look here, man, look here, man, a little-
Sir, I'm wanting to rename the Ramia Road Park or dedicate it to Jackie John.
Let me bring this up. This is not trying to sound bad, please. Because I, we, we, it's never happened where we've named town structures after people.
Right.
Because if we took this request, and someone could come in and say, like Mr. Stevens out there, he's, he served 20 years, I want the request that we name this park for him. And then somebody else may come in, we have no criteria. Somebody may say, I want to name South Garner Park to Ronnie Williams Park, or whatever. So we hadn't, the town really has never done that. Now, is there some way we'd like to honor Mr. Johns? Yes. I have, matter of fact, I talked to one citizen about a couple of things, the way to honor Mr. Johns. Mr. Johns said, told me more than once, may have told you too, how proud he was that we were having a rec center downtown, and how proud he was on Montague Street, because, you know, that was his route to cross over 70 and get on Montague and go up and down Main Street and do his walk-in and do his loops. And I thought it's appropriate that that's where the building is. Talked to one person about, I think, a nice prominent plaque in there, and talking about Mr. Johns, with his picture on, at his service at Springfield, on his, on that, that service, was a beautiful, great picture of him.
Good.
And I think that would be a great idea. I'm not opposed, I would rather change a street name than I would name a park. I would change Montague Street to Jackie John Way, but that's what I would prefer to do. Because I think that's a better way. I, I think that to me is, is a, because of where he lived, on Montague, and the walking he did there, I think that would be a way to honor more than just naming a park. And I say that because if we open up the door, because we have no criteria to name something for someone, if we open up the door, then again, the next meeting, somebody may say, name this park. We don't have so many parks, and we might run out of something. I'm just, that's just me saying it. We have no criteria based on how to name something after someone. When I brought up the name, the, the bridge out to honor Mayor Royal, it was a bridge, it wasn't a park. And because he worked, he worked to help with timber drive, he also was with DOT, it was, it was somewhat appropriate, I thought. And so, in honor of Mr. Johns, there are different ways you can do it. And as the rest of the council may think I'm crazy, and I'm fine. But I just, we don't have no criteria to name, you know, we could name the police station after one of our past chiefs, or name someone, this after someone else. It's, it's, we have nothing set up to do that. But I do think there's a way, I, I would like to honor Mr. Johns, yes. Whether it would be, we do Montague Street and/or a plaque in, in the, in the, in the new rec center, talking about his hard work for doing that, and also the many miles he walked by there, there's a ton of thousands of times he walked on down that street. It's just a thought.
But may I say this? Years ago, before they put that park down there, then Mr. John had his signature on that. Because the park, before they moved the park where it's at now, it was on Bagwell. The little, it was a little park on Bagwell. And if I ain't mistaken, I might be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't Mr. John have something to do with the park where it's at now?
My time now, after that.
Yeah, it's been years, but that was in the early, early 80s, late 70s, when I was a little boy.
I know, I know they made the park bigger, because it used to be a small park, and they made it bigger.
On Bagwell.
Yes. But that's before my time. I, I can't say.
I mean, he done a lot for the community. I played ball there every, every Sunday when I was growing up, you know, coming up through high school.
But, I mean, again, I'm just putting it out there, because we have no criteria. And if someone comes in and requests something in every meeting, then what do we do? Do one and not the other. That's, that's just the way I'm, I'm putting it out there.
If we don't rename the park, could we have a stone or something, put that with his name on it?
Can I make? Go ahead. A suggestion is that maybe we refer this to committee, Law and Finance Committee, and we come up with some criteria, because staff has looked into naming, a policy for naming, either buildings, parks, or even street, it can cover street or whatever. I think we need a policy, so we have some guidelines. Because Garner is acquiring more property than it ever has. We're building more structures and bigger structures than we ever have. And so I think it'd be better if we did have a policy and put it in, in writing. And I think Mr. Johns is definitely worthy of being honored in some form or fashion. But we want to try to be consistent in this case and in future cases. So we need to have something in writing on how we're going to handle these in the future, and for this one too. And so if you'd like, we can refer to the Law and Finance Committee, and then the town staff can put together a sample policy for you to react to and put some criteria to it. And it can include anything from naming a building, or placing a stone in someone's honor, so that we have some criteria for doing these type of honorariums, I guess you could call them. And not just do it on the spur of the moment, you know, not saying this is, or base entirely on emotion or whatever at the time, that it's well thought out, and we have a plan for doing it. And I think that's the best way to go forward overall. And, and figure out a way to honor Mr. Johns.
I think the government died in office, that's criteria enough to do it now.
Do what now?
He died in office, just enough criteria for me to do it now.
Well, I, I, well, certainly, I'm, I'm, I'm sense the sentiment here is, is we want, we want to honor Councilmember Johns in some form or fashion. But, but I do believe the, the best course of action would be what the town manager has recommended. That is, let's refer to committee and, and, and look at some, some criteria, not only for honoring him, but for future things we want to do, so that we'll have a process in place that we believe will certainly appropriately honor him. Because as Gray's mentioned, there may be some other item that would as well honor his memory. So I think, I think we favor it, we just need to, we just need to put some logistics around it and decide what is the best, best thing to do. At least that's my view.
Let's hear from everybody.
I would agree. I think we need to, to have a discussion about it. I'll say, I don't want to say thank you to, for bringing this topic up to us, because something is going to be done now, otherwise maybe it wouldn't be.
I'd like to say also that to him my heart. He was my mentor, and didn't even know I was being mentored by him. And I know that he would want things done in decency and order. And part of decency and order is, I would think, with, with, looking at it from a policy standpoint, as to how we are fair, not only to him, but to others who may be rightfully honored as well.
Thank you for just allowing us to come and speak. I didn't know the proper protocol of the way to do it. I really didn't. But I just wanted to come and, like, throw the idea out there to see, basically how it could be done. If y'all could just figure out what it is you want to do and get back with it, we'd greatly appreciate it. Our event is not until September. We do it every year, September. Last year, he was, actually had a chance to attend our event. We gave out town of Garner certificates to all our outstanding members, and he actually had a chance to come and attend. So we really was happy about that. But like I said again, thank you for allowing us to come speak. We don't know actually how to do things, but-
Learning.
Yeah, learning as we go along. And y'all just allow us to do whatever it is that we knew can do, and however we can do it, okay? All right. Thank you.
Just for the record, we do have one facility that's named after someone, the Wade Vester Building. I don't know how that came about, but I think it would be appropriate to have more discussion about it and to put it in some type of policy we can all be consistent on.
Okay. Do I, how, does someone get back in contact with me to let me know, or do I just keep coming?
The way we do things, we do it by committee, and it takes a year or so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you give your information to one of the assistant managers over there? We can make sure we get in contact with you when we have the, the subcommittee meeting.
Okay, all right.
Take that into consideration.
Thank you again for giving us this opportunity, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alvin, committee report.
Yeah, make a comment on the committee. The Ken and I serve on the ad hoc group to develop the memorandum of understanding, leading to a possible merger with the fire department at some future date. We've been having ongoing meetings regarding this MOU. Today was one of those meetings. We've covered, we've had a, a, a list of various items we wanted to cover, particularly with respect to personnel, and benefits, and facilities, and medical insurance, just a variety of issues. It, that process is ongoing. It will still be a while longer. While we're making progress, I would want to let you all know that don't expect an MOU anytime in the next few months. We're also working through, the fire department's working through the schedule of getting accredited. So quite frankly, it may be, it may be a couple of years or so out. But I, yes, work is ongoing, but there's not going to be any, just, we're making positive steps and haven't not, have not run into any real roadblocks. But it's going to take some education before we ever get to the point to, and, and some, and some issues addressing finances, finances of it, of funding a merger. And so it's, it's going to take a little while. And be patient with us, and we'll, we'll get there. Anything you want to add, Ken, or Matt?
No, I, I, well stated, Mr. Kennedy. I'd, I think when we started the process, we all, I think, thought we'd get to the same spot at some point. And I guess from my standpoint, being a little impatient, I'd hoped a little quicker. But I, I can see the wisdom over time. I think we're, we're, we're taking it rather methodical way, which I think is a good thing to do. And it does give the fire department in the meantime opportunities to continue its reaccreditation process, which we knew was going to take a while. So Mr. Kennedy's right on target. I think, I think we're going to get there, but it's not going to happen.
Yeah, let's go to the manager.
You have Garner info in the back of your packet there, and also a building and permit report. We do not have the finance report in there right now, but we can get that information to you at a later date. And also wanted to mention that a couple of months ago, well, may not have been that long ago, just maybe about a month ago, Mr. Johnson introduced a report of projects, a project status report. I don't know if you remember, but that's something that the engineering department is keeping up to date. And we're going to have that updated, I think, quarterly. And he's printed out the updated sheet for you. And this will be posted online, so if anybody wants to see kind of what's going on, some of the newest projects that have been permitted, and the status, just to show you, well, not permitted, I guess these are, these are town projects. Some of our town, street and sidewalk projects. And that'll give you up-to-date status of what's going on with those. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
Rodney, can, excuse, Mr. Jefferson, can we just add that I think the, the colored text, the red colored text, Mr. Johnson said, were things that had changed since you saw the report last time. So that would just let you have an easy way to, to visually see things that have changed.
All right. And then just some information from Mr. Stallings, the Economic Development Director. May 6th through the 10th is Small Business Economic Development Week. And there's some events planned with the Chamber of Commerce. And we can, I can get these to you, but I'll mention, mention some of them. So on May the 6th at 12:00 PM, there'll be a ribbon cutting and open house at Gear Works, and a mayor, mayor rural proclamation and food truck. And that's located at 120 East Main Street. So that'll kick off the week. And then there's a series of events after that, including a coffee conversation at Lorraine's Coffee House. On May the 7th, at 7:30 AM, and then a, the Business Exchange Breakfast at the Quest Fellowship Church on May the 8th, starts at 7:30 AM. And on May the 9th, from 5:00 to 7:00, Square Talk, How to Start and Run a Business at Avisboro Restaurant. And then the culmination of the week's event will be May the 10th, 11:30 to 1:30, a business appreciation, well, that's not open to the public, I don't think. That's a business appreciation lunch they'll have for some of the businesses. So just the, a well-rounded list of things, just to celebrate that week. And hopefully you can make it to that May 6 ribbon cutting, to get that kicked off. So. And that's it.
Mr. McGee, I'm, yes, for the benefit of the members of the public who tuned in early and had the opportunity to see the presentation by Mr. McGinnis at the petitions and comments section, I would like to give a tiny bit of background to put this into context. What Mr. McGinnis was referring to is that back in the summer, he was cited with a violation of operating a, a business out of a residential lot. He appealed that violation, which was certainly his right to do so. He appealed it to the Board of Adjustment. In October, the Board of Adjustment conducted a five-hour hearing from 7:00 PM until midnight. And there is a full transcript of that hearing available filed with the court. He has appealed that Board of Adjustment decision to court, which is his right to do. That matters before the Superior Court. A full transcript of that proceeding was filed with the court. Any member of the public who wishes to, to examine into the accuracy of whether I made any, any appropriate, or rude, or offensive comments to or about Mr. McGinnis can search that transcript. Also, there were about five or six members of the town staff present at that hearing, the full complement of the Board of Adjustment, and several dozen people in the audience. I would suggest that anyone who wants to inquire may ask any of those persons whether there was anything inappropriate said about Mr. McGinnis, or anything about him, except his running the business. I'm willing for the public to look into that, all they want to. Thank you.
So everything, so everything that he alleged, that you said, is on the record? And I mean, what you said was on, what you, what you said was on record, and what he alleges you said may not be on the record.
Well, what, what, what was said in a private conference with him and my, and as long he was in my office, is obviously not on record. So that's, that's, you know. But the, the procedures before the Board of Adjustment are certainly a matter of record for anyone to look into if they want to.
Can I clarify one thing? This lawsuit is between the town of Garner and Mr. McGinnis. It's not between Bill Anderson and Mr. McGinnis. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, that's totally correct. It's an appeal from the Board of, there are two matters. There's an appeal before the, from the decision by the Board of Adjustment. Yeah. That's going to be up for the judge to decide. That's, that's beyond our control. We file briefs, we argue, the judge decides. The other matter is a, a lawsuit seeking a civil penalty on behalf of the town against Mr. McGinnis for violating the ordinance. That is a secondary matter which has been put on inactive status until we get the decision of the court from the appeal from the Board of Adjustment. Yeah. So that's just routine business. Thank you.
Call your next case.
Go on, Mr. Ken. Emma.
Wow. I don't have anything to talk about right at this moment, outside of just-
It'll get better or worse.
Yes, sir. You should have started on the other end, Mr. Mayor. But no, I, I'm just appreciative to be here, and I look forward to working with the council. And thank you so much for choosing me. I look forward to doing the best I can for the town of Garner, for the time I have available.
Thank you for wanting to serve. Kathy.
Yes, sir. I attended a conference in Asheville two weeks ago, sponsored by the Stennis Center. It was for Southern women in public service. And it's a very, very good conference. I was really pleased with what I learned, what I saw. And they told us that 25% of the seats in Congress are occupied by women. the seats in Congress are occupied by women, and 51% of the voting population are women, and it only takes 30% to reach the tipping point for a woman's voice to be heard just a little bit more, so watch out, we're going to be working on that, okay? Excellent conference, though, much, far beyond my expectations. There are several properties in the 300 block of West, yeah, West Garner Road, need to be, mode looking really bad. May 19th, Garner High School will have their baccalaureate service at Aversboro Baptist Church, I believe that's at 3:00. Work session in two weeks due to a previous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item I have is a question, it came up at the Parks and Rec meeting, and so I probably got my answer there, but I wanted to ask it here. The, the parking lot at the GPAC, it apparently has been stripped. So, the question is, do we know when that parking lot will be available for use? And I had forgotten, I guess, that as part of the process, I know one time we talked about having a, I thought a covered walkway from the, from the, from that parking to the GPAC, but I understand they did that sometime back, caused some other issues, but if, and I understood that maybe, I believe in explanation, maybe Elmo remembers that something having to do with the retention pond there and some issues related to that. I was just wondering if the town manager could give us an idea of when that parking lot may be available for use?
Yeah, that, that project hasn't been accepted by the town yet. It is part of the overall construction of the rec center, and the addition of the parking lot next to the GPAC is one bid, one project, but there are some issues with that retention pond, as you could see now, it's retaining water. There were some, some mistakes in the way it was, it was built and put together, and some sequencing of events as far as when it was paved versus when it was constructed, and that's caused some problems with the filter material in the pond, so it's holding water, and so I would think we would not allow any parking on it until that retention pond issue is fixed, because that is used to filter, you know, impurities out of the environment. So, I can let Mr. Johnson speak to it further?
Yeah, I think we did talk with the contractor, and I think that they're, they're amenable to having, allowing temporary parking, like for night events, but they need, need to be able to still work in that area, so during the day, we would like it to be clear, so that they can continue their operations until they're 100% complete, but I think we've kind of gotten good feedback from them, that as long as it's just a, a night event here or there, that they're, they'll work with us.
Okay, so, so, well, okay. Technically, it could be used, but yes, until it's clarified, I assume it won't be used, and maybe that's not so. I, I enjoy attending events there, and it is, there is a convenience factor of having that available, sure enough, so hopefully we can make full use of it soon. So, Mr. Mayor, as a result of Mr. Vance's new position now, he and I both attended the Parks and Rec meeting last night. I as the liaison from the council, and he is a Parks and Rec member, but I would submit that since he is now a fellow council member, that, I don't know, protocol or otherwise would suggest that one of us needs to, to step back, and I would, I'm going to propose that that person, could be me, if he, if he desires to continue serving, he served there well, and I've served there for a number of years, but I'm on the HR committee and the law and finance committee.
I do not have a problem with that at all.
Other committees, senior services, he's got two committees. We'll talk about it later.
Anything else? Well, and speaking of committees, I don't know if we formally informed the council of changes in the GEDC Board of Directors, some transitions going on there. We've decided to expand that board of directors to five members. Have I already covered this? And so, Mr. Ronnie Thompson and Ms. Doris Hugner and Mr. Jeff Swaim have been approved by the current board to become new board members. And again, because of Mr. Vance's elevation, can I use that term, to the council, and that we were both serving there, he, at our last meeting, agreed to stand aside from, from the Board of Directors. FYI, in regards to that. With that, I think that's all I have for now.
Ronnie Thompson, Doris Hugner, and who was the third?
Yeah, Nancy Anderson's husband, yes.
So, do we need to approve that, or do, is, that's just some GEDC does it itself?
That's right, yeah. I think it was within the full purview of the GEDC to go ahead and do that, by our bylaws and so forth. Just bringing it to you for informational purposes.
Mr. Marshman, if I may, if you wouldn't mind me adding, those were members of the advisory board, so they, those members served on the advisory board from, I believe, all three of them since its inception, and they were, the board offered advisory board members an opportunity to step up to that board.
Marshman's right, isn't he?
You never can tell. Well, if I can take some of Mr. Single this time, I'm not, no, go ahead.
Go right ahead.
No, I'm finished.
Mr. Allen, she didn't know about these committees, you're in for, gosh, let's get Mr. Dickerson and Mr. Hotz and Mr. Rollins to get you in a meeting, you have a lot of things.
We're going to do an orientation for him pretty soon, about that and other things.
You don't know what you got yourself up into.
It's all good.
Question, Mr. Johnson, about the, where do you get these? You updated charts, I noticed the difference in the chart in April to the chart you gave us initially dated March 14th, this is dated April 5th, and so some of these designs on some of the sidewalk projects are moving forward. Are they still on schedule to go advertise a bid sometime later in the spring? The two, the capital sidewalk projects are the Spring Drive, Vandoor Springs Road, and the Vandoor Springs Road Tiffany Circle. They listed to advertise for bids in spring of 2019. Is that still on schedule, or that be pushed back?
Yes, the Spring Drive, Vandoor Springs project is really, it's complete, the plans are complete, and we're putting together the bid documents. We've made it, talked about the possibility of using CDVG funding for that project, so that's a recent conversation that's just come about, and if, if so, we've got to rework the bid documents, make sure we've got any federal requirements that are required for that funding source, but that one is ready. Vandoor Springs Road, the second one, is a little further behind, it's, it's in right away acquisition, I believe, with the attorney's office, but the plans are about 75% complete, so it's, it should be ready, I would think, by late, later spring or early summer.
And that's the one that had the Clomar study, is that?
That's correct.
Is that being completed, or is that still in process?
I think it's almost complete, if it's not already complete.
Okay, good. All right, and the utility project, looks like the design on that is complete, and it appears that, of course, this advertised with bids, it's already been advertised with bids?
That's correct. It's good, we had our first, our previewed conference last week, and the bid opening, I believe, is next week.
Great, okay, good, that one's moving forward. All right, very good, thank you, I appreciate that, appreciate the updates on these. Good information. While Mr. Jones is here, I'd like to thank him to pass along the public works, all the work they've done on the spring cleanup, and that they've had a, you told me, larger than normal volumes, a lot of stuff out on the streets, we did our share, our house. It's amazing how much stuff you put up there, and it gets picked up before public works comes around.
Large sales.
Yes. So, anyway, I appreciate the work they, they've done, also appreciate the late replacement at South Connor Park, y'all did, all of your annual replacement or semi-annual replacement, appreciate you doing those, being out there. Two nights a week with soccer and baseball and softball players are out there playing also, appreciate that. I also want to again, thank, Mr. Kennedy mentioned, but thank Sherman Jurgen for his willingness to work with the town on that park property. Again, I think it'll be a great asset for our town. You know, we've acquired two park properties now that, and the former Meadowbrook Golf Course property, that in one day can be a, an asset to our citizens, asset in our park system, that people will enjoy, whether they're passive, active, a combination of the two. It'll be well-liked. Also, Mr. Niss, I took Mr. Kennedy for a ride a couple of weeks ago, and took him down to Wilson, and showed him one of their athletic complexes down there, where they have a lot of soccer tournaments from up and down the east coast. Barton College has, for their affiliation, they have tournaments that affiliate with that age group, but also kids, high school kids and younger, and he was impressed, he's, one of the first things he said after he wrote through it is, is we need to get a field trip with the council and some staff, and we need to come down here and look at this, because they have two tournament-level turf fields, are very nice.
Plus four more turf fields.
Four more turf fields, plus numerous grass, that's just multipurpose fields, soccer, lacrosse, use it for football, plus they have a combination, four total baseball, softball fields. One is the stadium, it's a small stadium where they have, Mr. Bridges may be familiar with that, where you can have tournaments and so forth, it's just like a miniature Mudcat Stadium or DPAC, it's very nice. And it's, that's, some of the concepts they have there, some things we can consider, also with other parks in the area, that Holiday Springs has a nice complex at their baseball stadium, and turf fields at their park, and some other, I think, parks to look at, but I think when we give the master plan, will help us, give us some guidance, but anyway, I'm going to mention to our staff in an email, consideration of taking a field trip down there, looking what they have in Wilson, I think it'd be well worth the time, because it's nothing fancy, by any means, but the fields are very, very nice.
High dollars, but I mean, do you have any idea what the...
This is all old farmland, that's what I'm saying, there's no curbing gutter, it's gravel parking, there's some paved parking, mainly, but mainly, mostly gravel, this is nothing fancy. The fields are, yes, parkage element, bills is being sold, but yes, parkage element, but, you know, it's not curbing gutter, doesn't have all paved roads, all paved parking, there is some paved, but there's a lot of, less, less, less paved than there is, not paved, but...
I was talking about the turf itself.
The turf, turf fields are, you know, those, turf fields are set up in a way, because you have to have a drainage system underneath, and the rain comes in, it's set up, you just don't pop turf out there on top of cement, it's a little more complex than that. As I mentioned last May, in a tournament that our teams were in, it poured for two hours, we played soccer for two hours, and played, and other getting wet, the field drained the water fine, it was drenched, but that's, anyway, it's just something, an opportunity to look at what they're doing, in consideration of what the town may want to do one day, and there are other parks to look at also, so that's all I have, thank you.
Following up on the purchase of the Jurgen property, could a letter be prepared and sent to Mr. Jurgen thanking him for, for the, for the purchase, and particularly citing the fact that there was a substantial gift as part of that purchase? Following up on what Gray said, I think it'd be, if we could schedule a trip, I've heard also that right up the road from there in Rocky Mount, they've got a sports complex, we might try to, since we've gone that far, just to see both of them on the same day. Last thing, well, next to last thing, last week we had a budget preview, and, and I understood that we'll be getting the budget in a couple of weeks, and asked a little bit earlier about a budget update, because to the folks that are viewing, that was, it was a public meeting last week, but we're facing some, some deficits down the road, or now, and down the road over the next five years with the way things are programmed, and it's going to be a challenge in preparing this year's budget and subsequent budgets. So, if we can have some budget discussion before it's presented, because we've got some, there's some challenges out there, so if you've got any comments on, on that that you'd like to share with us, Rodney and I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, what we're looking at this year is the, the revenue for the type of things that we, and our, you know, our staff and departments are requesting, there's a shortfall, you know, you know, of course, we got to have a balanced budget by July the 1st, so there's a number of items that, you know, we definitely not going to be able to consider, especially some of the new items, we call it decision packages, but they're basically new items that have been put forth, and there's just not going to be enough revenue to do those, and then on top of that, the things that we do each and every day, we might be looking at making some cuts in some of those things. We're, you know, going to do our best to balance the budget, we might have to use, you know, a combination of, of things to get that accomplished, that includes making some cuts, and just looking at any other revenue generation opportunities there might be, and, you know, hopefully it's maybe a one-year blip, but like I said, we have started looking at things more long-range, and we have done some five-year forecasts, and I'm looking at those forecasts right now, it doesn't look like there's going to be a substantial revenue to, to do a lot of, a lot of new initiatives without, you know, bonds and other, other revenue enhancements, so we'll have to take a look at how that comes out.
I appreciate that, Rodney, because I'm, I like, I think I, I think I heard what you say, is that not everything, this budget's going to be all additions and expansions, I hope there's some, we look carefully at places that we might be able to save some dollars, or reallocate some, some resources, and, because it's, the challenge is a little bit more than, I don't think, I don't see any easy way, and I tell, I tell anybody that's listening that everybody won't necessarily be, can't, cannot necessarily be happy with anything that comes with a $1.4 million budget shortfall, and so, we've got, we've got some homework to do before we roll, before that budget's rolled out, and particularly before it's adopted, but I appreciate that update. To all those folks that, that live on the gold route, that have been concerned about their pickup forest, we can tell them that do not, don't despair, we'll be getting to you within the next seven to 10 days, or you might want to comment on, on how this might close out.
I'll give a quick, I'll give a quick, brief update, if I may. Essentially, we have, cleanup this year has been exceptionally heavy, we are on track to probably double what we annually, what we normally pick up on a spring cleanup. We are finalizing the blue routes now, the last set of week's routes that was advertised in the cleanup, we are working actively right now on blue and green, and then where our next initial will be to go to gold. We may come very close to getting most of the debris up by the week's end, we'll, there will be some work still remaining to be done next week. The one thing I would tell folks is there's a number of crews that come by your home, if a mattress is left, mattresses, electronics, and tires are picked up separately from everything else, so we will come back and get those, and they will likely be next week, but we hope to give most of the bulk of trash and yard waste up this week, if at all possible. Crew's been working very diligently, but it's been exceptionally heavy, and I don't have a good reason why.
Yard waste from the blue route today, because you cleared them, and other stuff yesterday, you say it's twice, it's twice what it usually is?
As of, as of last Friday, we, we've not gotten our bills yet for our, what we call our trash, the things that go to landfill. As of last Friday, we had taken 153 loads of yard waste material to our local, to our local disposal landfill. The previous two years cleanup, in 2018, we hauled probably 95, 98 loads, I think it was, and then in 2017, we hauled about 88 loads. So, that doesn't count anything we've done this week, and like I say, we're, we've hauled more since then, I'm quite certain we'll, we'll top the 200 mark of loads of that, so it's just, that gives you an idea of just one of the elements that we pick up, so it's been very heavy, and trash is equally as heavy, we just don't have those final numbers yet.
Of course, this is a too simplified a statement, but I'll make it, it's certainly true, as I would understand it, I mean, I don't know if some people sometimes think, well, you know, you can just bring a truck through and get these things and move on with them, but a lot of this stuff requires, what do you call it, a front-end loader, and those kinds of things, that you can't just move that piece of equipment to just anywhere so, so quickly, so certainly that's part of why it takes longer, I would think.
It, it does take a good bit of time, and the fact that we were picking up multiple things and make, needing multiple touches...
and needing multiple touches per residence, if each resident is using all the, available themselves as complete service, you could have trash come by, one crew come by your house to get up one type of material, another crew to come back and later get, or that same crew come back later and get the other type. And then tires and TVs are typically, we try to run those together. But again, those items have been heavy as well this year, and then mattresses is the final thing we come back and get. So, like I say, it could be up to, I mean, it's five touches per residence. And we're looking at some ways to better deliver those services in the future, some ways we may can help keep ourselves on schedule a little better without still taking away the service, but just maybe offering it a different way. So, we're actively looking at that as well. But trust me, we feel your pain, and we are coming.
A great service to our citizens, I'm convinced of that.
Thank you.
One more item.
Could I just follow up on that? It's somewhat related, but council had asked us to schedule a follow-up session on some of the meetings we had had with some residents regarding appearance and those type of things. And one of the things we're waiting to do was finish the spring pickup because a part of the strategy when we met last year was to do a communications campaign out to our citizens, working with our communications department, our co-compliance department, our neighborhood improvement department, and bringing that into a multifaceted type of approach to how to solve some of these problems. And so, we really wanted to be able to bring back even more of the statistics even beyond what you hear Forrest giving you an update now. So, we're going to try to get the spring cleanup finished before we schedule that follow-up so that we have some actual results to bring you from that campaign. So, it seemed like an appropriate time to mention that as a follow-on to Forrest's update to you.
I'm glad you mentioned that. There's one particular complaint that I get that hasn't been, it's been, hadn't been vocalized a lot, but it needed some cleanup. Written by the place, and they must have gotten a message because there is, it looks a lot better, and there's a whole lot up the street for us to haul off, so maybe it was working, John. And if you all might bear with me, as a point of personal privilege, I don't think it'll come as any surprise to some of you, and probably is no great surprise, and might even hear some hurrahs or whatever, but I will not be running for office this fall. I need to, wanted to announce this now. The filing period begins in about 75 days, and we need adequate time, or any aspiring candidate needs ample time to make their plans known and make some final decisions as to whether they're going to run or not. A lot of times, people ask why. I'm not disturbed at anybody, and Elmo, I apologize for possibly taking some of the glow off of your evening. It was not intended to be this way, but this is, I'd planned this for, this was the time that I'd selected a number of months ago. I don't, I'm not seeking another office, but I am, it will give us, my wife and I, a little bit more time to see our family more frequently, maybe even visit a few more historical places, play a little more golf, and then we'll see what comes next. In the meantime, I would, and there's still eight months to go, I will never consider myself a lame duck because I still can vote, I still have a voice, and that vote still counts till December the 5th. The budget is always a challenge. I definitely have a real interest in that. It's a challenging time for all of us. We've done our job in the past, and we will continue to do our job. I would say this, I would ask us, and this may be a little premature, but I would ask the council to carry on in much the same way that we have done so in the past 12 years, or actually, I've been here 16, but it's a, it's a council currently sits, but we've always had a cooperative attitude. I think that separates us from a lot of other councils and not putting them down, but I think the results of some things that have happened have been because we can get along. We've never taken our jobs as partisan, and for that reason, we don't, we don't look at it as, why are you taking this position? Did somebody from on high, from this party or that party, tell you what to do, and have you got to toe the markets? Everybody, we take it at face value, and what you say is what you believe and not necessarily what somebody else believes. You've established the standard, in my opinion, which you can be proud of. I will, I have enjoyed working with you, and I'll continue to enjoy the remainder of my time. And thank you for letting me speak on that subject tonight. And if there's no other business, I'll move that we adjourn.
I want to say to you, now and later, I respect you.
Thank you.
We've talked a long time.
Move to adjourn.
Second emotion.
The motion is second. All in favor, vote for Senate.